Okay, I'm showing 5:30, so we will go ahead and convene the Wednesday, February 21st Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Ruth, will you please call roll?
Chairman. Chairman Miller?
Here.
Chairman York? He should be here.
No, he's absent.
Oh, he is absent?
Yeah, he got held up at a doctor's clinic.
Okay, okay. Chairman Mandel? Excuse me, Commissioner Mandel. Commissioner Salazar Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Munoz is absent. Commissioner Mottagi is absent. Commissioner Lerma?
Here.
Commissioner Hedrick is absent. And Commissioner Button? One, two, three, four, five. We just have a quorum to conduct the meeting.
We do, and he's got an abstention. Okay, okay.
How are we gonna do that then?
Yeah, it's the zoning case.
After all of that, it's gonna be taken.
Is that the one you're saying?
Yes.
So what should we do? Mr. Butt?
We can proceed with the other stuff.
Okay. All right, moving on to public comment. Ms. Ruth, will you please read in the rules of decorum?
Thank you, Chairman. Citizens will be allowed to attend and make public comments in person at city planning commission meetings. The public is invited to speak on any agenda item and any other items that pertain to the planning commission. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you choose to speak during this period, you will not be allowed to speak again when the specific items are being considered in order of the agenda.
Would anybody like to speak on anything other than a specific item that's on tonight's agenda? I see none, so I will go ahead and close the public comment and move on to the approval of absences for Commissioners Mandel and Mottagi.
Move to approve.
A second? You have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the approval of minutes.
Move the waiver of minutes from February 7th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to consent public hearing, possible action items A and B.
Mark Roscoe, Planner 3 with Development Services. I'm gonna be reading into record consent items A and B. Starting off with the Platts. We have item number two. Driscoll Village, Block 7, lots 27 through 37. It's a replat of 1.84 acres. This one is located north of Leopard and actually located at 3618 Mueller Street. Item number three, also Vista subdivision units 1 and 2, preliminary plat of 57.32 acres, located west of Highway 286 and north of FM 43. Item number four, Flower Bluff Heights, Block 4, Lot 15R. It's a final plat of .43 acres located at 301 Skipper Lane. We have item number five, Moreland View Unit 2. This is conditional approval. It's a final plat of 11.595 acres located north of Yorktown Boulevard and east of Rodfield Road. Continuing with item consent, item B, time extensions. We have a second extension request for a 12-month extension for Fifth Quarter Industrial Park preliminary plat. It is located east of North Pidger Island Drive and north of Bates Road. Item number seven, first time, first extension request for a 12-month extension for Starlight Estates, Unit 8. It's a final plat of 16.54 acres located south of Yorktown Boulevard and west of Krypton Drive. The Platts are meeting the TRC comments and the Texas Local Government Code. Staff does recommend approval for the four plat items and does recommend approval on the two plat extension requests. Staff can answer questions at this time for their consent items A and B.
Any Commissioners have any questions for staff on, anything on consent A and B? Just a quick question on that. Second extension, is that a second 12-month extension or is that a 12 months on top of a previous six-month extension?
They're asking for the 12-month. What do you mean six-month? Because the previous was a six-month?
No, the item number six.
Oh, number six. They just, that was their request. It should be for 24 months, but they actually, their letter actually asked for a 12-month extension.
Okay.
For preliminary plats. Preliminary plats are two years.
Oh, two years, okay. Okay, I'm good. I will open up the public hearing on items A and B. Would anybody like to speak on any items in the consent agenda items A or B? I see none, so I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we pass items 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 as presented by staff.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So now... Do we need to have any action for tabling?
You'd still have the same quorum issue. We'd just be in no action, I guess, if we moved to lack of quorum.
Okay.
Will this have to be presented for our next meeting as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, apologies to the applicant on the zoning case. And we will, do I need to call for a motion? Okay, no action. Okay. Okay, moving on to the Director's Report. Mr. Raymond?
Hello. Before I get started, I'd like to, Councilman Lerma said something to me when he first came in and I realized, oh my gosh, I didn't share it with this group. So, at the end of last year, NINA, who is the Assistant Director of Land Development, retired, right? Mike Dice, Mike Dice, raise your hand. Michael Dice is the new NINA, right? So all building division and land development are under, well, I mean, you understand the reference. He's... Sorry, he's taken over the role of being Assistant Director over building and land development. So if you have issues with land development, Mr. Dice is your guy. Okay, so a few months ago, when I was standing here talking about the master plans, the look I got from this group wasn't very pleasant. And you said a lot of things that I listed to. The first thing was, I guess I should gaze him further, right? So at the end of that meeting in October, December, whenever it was, I went to the chair and I said, hey, I apologize. Because he said, hey, I thank you for bringing here, but I wish you hadn't. So at the end of the meeting, I said, hey, sorry, sir, I'll get out of your hair, you'll never see me again. And he goes, no, 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 I don't, don't, please keep us engaged and part of the process. So as to, as part of what he said, or an extension of what he said, I'm gonna start back, I'm gonna start with you. What we presented at CAC, I'm gonna present to you all the way through until we have our workshop, which is scheduled in May. So hopefully, when I present to you, I'm gonna point you to where you can find us on the website so that many of you said, hey, it was like drinking from a fire hydrant. You know, I guess it was in October, whenever it was, and we, the next day it was seeming like we had to go to this workshop and make decisions, right? So we're gonna do the best that we can to give you as much information as you want in advance. You can certainly ask us questions. If I do not know the answer, I'll certainly give it to a consultant. But Dice and I will try to answer questions so that you are a bit more informed so that when you get to the conversation. And by the way, the workshop that we'll have, it'll only be one workshop, it won't be two, so you don't have to grumble for that, right? But it'll also be planning commission, council, and CAC members. Because what we realized at the last one is that the very people that I tried to say to you, hey, CAC is a guy, they couldn't talk because it was just council and you guys, right? So, but they could, they could have answered a lot of questions that you, we kind of went around the axilon because it is their recommendations that we were discussing at those times. Same thing will, same thing will happen here when we, when we talk about impact fees, right? And keeping, keeping in mind, this is still a council decision. So there's, you know, it's not in the bag, as you would say. Council, CAC still needs to make a recommendation. Council still needs to, you know, vote it up or vote it down. That vote would go before council in June, hopefully. And, and before that time, I want to make sure you guys are engaged as possible. And you've, you've, you've had an opportunity to vet everything that that group had vetted before we actually have our workshop in May. So that's a lot said, I just want to, I'm just trying to learn from my missteps, and we can go from there. So next slide, please, or do I change them myself? Sorry. Yes, please. Thank you, sir.
I'm also IT.
He's a gentleman and a scholar. I'm head of busy talent, yes. Okay, so the presentation, we, we've been with CAC, working with CAC for about two and a half, going on three years this March. So it's really about three years, because the next month it'll be three years. And we've done several Impact Fee 101 meetings with them, and then this is the one we did in October, which kind of, instead of like the high-level things, it kind of gets down to, hey, this is what impact fees are. Definition, process, structure, and timing, so, because we're kind of getting into the meat of this, right? So all along, even when we were doing the master plans, we mentioned these kinds of things and brought CAC along, pointing back to it so that it wouldn't be like this big surprise when, when, when we finally started this discussion. Next slide, please. What is an impact fee, right? So as many of you know, we came here a few months ago and said water, wastewater, stormwater, road water fees are all governed by Chapter 395. In short, right, and this is off script, I wanted to make this comment. In this city, this is the eighth largest currently, because, you know, everything changes, right? But currently, we're the eighth largest city in this state based on population, right? Those that are above us and several below us, when development comes to that town, development just happens. In our town, development is very much relationship-driven, right? Developer would call council members and say, hey, hey, support my development, I want to build this, I want to build that. And in theory, in a modern city, you shouldn't have to do that. You just have rules in place that say if you want to develop, develop, right? And here's the costs associated with that, and council is kind of removed from that, right? And that's really what we're trying to move to. In this city, development doesn't quite happen like that, and that removes the kind of certainty that people have when they want to come to Corpus Christi. As a matter of fact, and you mentioned about out-town, out-of-town developers or whatever, when out-of-town developers reach out to Development Services, they go, hey, what are your impact fees? What are this, what are that? And you even said that in your skit that you would say about us. But, and it's odd, because when we say, oh no, we don't have impact fees, but we do have trust funds, and it's just, it's just odd, kind of, well, what's that? And try to explain it to them, whatever. And they automatically get the, oh gosh, I gotta, I've got to engage people or, or, or try to politic to get my, my development done. So it's, it's kind of an odd thing, and, and so all we're trying to do, good, bad, or indifferent, is just level the playing field so there's certainty across the board. You want to develop in Corpus Christi, we'll try to make that as seamless as possible. So everything is done, and if we stick with the state law, there, there's no need to go before council for those things because development will just happen, right? So 395 kind of does that, right? So it defines impact fees as a charge or assessment imposed by political subdivision against new development. And that's really the key here, right? It's just new stuff. I can't use it for old stuff, it's really just new stuff. And at the bottom, it says it's a one-time payment levying on new expansion, development, and for some share of its capital cost being placed on the utility or roadway system. In other words, right, the city is now in a driver's seat. We've never been in the driver's seat before for 42 years, and I don't know what they did before 1982, but in 1982, when they used the trust fund system, which we have now, the developer says, I want to go build over there. And, and, and we extended infrastructure with trust fund help to build over there. We only built over here, we extended infrastructure to build over there. There was no really rhyme or reason, no master plans, no pun intended. People just went where, you know, land was cheaper, it was easier, blah, 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 right? As a matter of fact, that's why we have so many open spaces in town, because it's very difficult and challenging to do infield development. It's very easy to do greenfield development because it's, you know, you can create the shangri-la you want to create. So in this case, with, with the master plans, land use assumptions, master plans, and associated capital improvement projects that were approved, now the city has put themselves in the driver's seat that says, okay. Because all of that was for a 10-year span, as you know. So for the next 10 years, this is where we want to go, and this is what we think we need to get there, right? So wherever they develop along that line, they've got, you know, if the chair comes and says, I want, I want infrastructure here because we have a project going S Y Z. So the city has two years to start and five years to complete, right? So, and we either can build it ourselves, so we can say to, to your company, you do it and you get credit, impact fee credit for it, right? So, but we know where, in theory, we know where we want to go today, tomorrow, and for the next 10 years. So that's, that's kind of what this is saying. Next slide, please. Sure. Good point. I shouldn't, I shouldn't have said new, I should have said growth. So this is all related to growth, so if...
We're not talking about if there's a greenfield lot out there, we build a new building.
Correct. Except for the fact that if that greenfield building you're gonna build puts any demand on the infrastructures in the ground, or your traffic count says you gotta do, you gotta get more lanes on that street or something. All of that's impact fee related, right? But in theory, you wouldn't think you need to stretch water or sewer there because it's in the street now. But if, if what you're building forces so much demand on what's in there now, and it's undersized, and we need to upsize it, the impact fee would, would be for that impact on the, on the network. So it's not new, and that's a great point, thank you. It's growth-related. Impact fees pay for growth-related, and I didn't finish what I was gonna say. The city's now in the driver's seat, so all of this, as is now, is really on the city, right? The heavy, heavy lifting, so to speak. The impact fee is just saying to the, to the developer, hey, this is your fair share. This is your impact on our network, and you owe us $2.05. The million dollars or whatever that network costs, we still carrying that, but today, that's all on ratepayers or taxpayers. At least this way, it's, and they say here, it's, it's development paying for its growth. It doesn't really do that, it just pays its share, its, its share on the impact of our network so that we can, they, so we can build whatever's needed. So it's growth-related, not necessarily new, thank you for that.
Can you do so I understand? So you previously, if, if I'm building something in town, and whether to greenbuild side or not, but it requires what we normally call offsite improvements? That would be an expense borne by the developer? So would, would that still be the same, or are these impact fees wanting to address that?
Yes, because those offsite improvements that brings your service to your development, you've got to pay a share of it, and the rest of it is on us. And that's what the Capital Improvement Plan, the projects, the CIP projects that were approved with the master plans, they delineate all of that. Like I said, it's high-level estimates, but we know, oh yeah, we gotta, we gotta put a 12-inch line out here, or whatever it is, right? So there's a cost associated with it that ultimately, when the CAC sits down and says, hey, what, what do we think the, the, the impact fee should be for wastewater or stormwater, or whatever? It's looking at all of that to, to, to come to what they think is a reasonable cost to help continue development in this city. These are the eligible costs, and the chair was speaking about some of that surveying costs. As you see, land acquisition, because if we gotta, you know, expand the right-of-way, purchasing the land to do that. Fees related to updating the capital improvement plans or the impact fees, and of course, debt service for eligible CIP improvements that are there. Next slide, please. And here are the things that are obviously not, and one of the things I was trying to share with you, repairing maintenance of existing facilities, operation and maintenance of whatever in the ground. Anything that's there, you know, that doesn't have anything to do with growth, no. So if, like the chair said, if there's a greenfield, I mean, if there's a brownfield site and he, he builds a building and it has no impact on water, wastewater, stormwater, roads, no impact fees are, he will, you will be charged no impact fees. Because you, you're just, you're just, you're just helping use capacity that's available on this, on the network that runs in front of your building. So it's only for really, it's only for growth-related items. Next slide, please. Accounting for impact fees, and one of the things I was saying, can be only used for projects identified on the capital improvement plan. That's why that plan was so important to be approved by council. Ultimately, what will happen, CCW, Public Works, whoever else has capital improvement plans, they will be consolidated into one city capital improvement plan, right? Always looking at those that are on, that were approved by council on, with that, with, with the master plans. Because whenever those projects come into play, those are eligible for, for possible impact fees, should CAC, CAC choose to do that. Next slide, please, okay. Impact fee process. And most of this, as you know, right, define, establishing defined service, service areas. They may or may not be the same for water, wastewater, stormwater, and roads. So let me share something with you. There are four master plans that were done and approved by council, water, wastewater, stormwater, and roads. Water has two service areas. Streets, roads have 21 service areas. Stormwater has eight, I think, and wastewater has six because of, six because of the treatment plants around the city. Each of those services, so the CAC group can, can say, hey, for stormwater, or let's just say wastewater, for wastewater, we're doing, they're all, the impact fee will be the same, whether I'm in Cal Island or I'm on the island. Or they can say in different service areas, you know, so much over here, so much over there, right? In other words, they can, again, let's talk about an infield development, they can kind of incentivize, right? In the downtown area, whatever this service area may be, on roads, wastewater, stormwater, and roads, they could take the, the impact fee, the zero, encouraging people to, to get in. Because what they're saying, the zero means that the city will eat the cost of whatever infrastructure is needed to have you build the shangri-la to help, you know, reinvest in our downtown, so to speak. So, so there, all of them, all of the master plans have service areas, right, that, that now CAC is looking at now, right? And the next slide, it says, hey, which we've already done that, which is, you know, go back, Dice, that's okay, determine, determine, you know, what the master plans are, right? Anticipate a timeline for construction. One of the things I said, the last bullet there in the middle, is that the city has to start in two years, but it has to be done in five years, or, you know, you can do it and get credit. You or developers, developers, whoever can do it and get credit, because they, in theory, as many would suspect, the private industry moves much faster than, than the public industry. And then, of course, they'll tell it is that determining costs of those elements, which we've done with the CIP that was approved a couple of months ago. Next slide, please. So where, where are we, or where we were then, public hearings? Because the first part of it was, number one, in the public hearings, which is the whole land use and CIP adoption. The second part, which is what we're hoping to do in June, is to take impact fee considerations to council, to have them make, you know, a decision on how they, how this group thinks the city should grow in the next... to have them make, you know, a decision on how they, how this group thinks the city should grow in the next 10 years, right? If they believe that, right? The middle one is just a final impact fee adopted by council. And you see the things there, right? It can vary because CAC can recommend a lot of things, what they're doing now. Well, we think we should, you know, give waivers over here, credits over there. We should incentivize growth in certain areas of the city. CAC can make all of those recommendations, which will be served up to council for, for consideration. Hey, that, that kind of makes sense. The last bullet is really one of the important ones, is, is when do we charge this fee? Do we charge at plat recardation? Do we charge at, when people pull meters, right? Or do we charge at building permit, right? Any one of those, any one of those areas, in multiple cities do different, or multiple stages, they charge these fees. So CAC will, CAC will make those recommendations as well. And of course, council will have the final up or down vote. And as you see at the end there, CAC can, can, can meet, no, later than five years, but they probably should meet every three years to make sure, hey, the fees we, we, we recommended to council and approved, you know, back then, is it still okay? Do we need to raise it? Do we need to lower it? Has something big come into the city and we need to make adjustments? Those kind of things, which is why the, the group will stay together. As long as their impact fees, that group will stay together. Next slide, please. Impact fee structure. This is, again, not wanting to get down into the weeds, but the calculated weighted cost of existing and new capacity of L U E, which means equivalent dwelling unit or a service unit. And I'm sure there are other, you guys probably heard other ways of saying, is it really just means a house, right? Allows for impact fee credit if the developer provides a contribution, or which could mean just build it for, in aid of construction of a particular facility. A determined amount of capital being funded through rates per E D U or, or L U E, right? Weighted capacity cost per E D U less rates of credit equals maximum fee for the dwelling unit, right? What we are working on and what CAC hopes to do is produce a maximum fee amount subject to council approval. That maximum fee amount or less, because CAC can always go and say, hey, we recommend $5 for every service here. And kind of go, oh, no, I think our city really needs to be at 350 or whatever. So as always, CAC is a recommending body. Council really makes the final decisions. Next slide, please. Living unit equivalent, or equivalent dwelling unit. So, and in short, the capital improvement projects, many will say plans, but they're not plans. They're projects, have costs with them. The overall cost, I think, was about under $6 billion collectively for all four, all four infrastructures, right? 395 state law says, hey, right off the top, cut that in half, right? So if we're at six, we're at three now, right? And that's where CAC is starting, basically with that second bullet, right? So water, wastewater, stormwater, and roads, they're looking at it and go, hmm, okay, well, we, we know our city. We know how we grow. We know what's here. We know what we want to see tomorrow. So we're, we're going to start at 3 billion. And I'm, of course, I'm being, I'm paraphrasing here because I don't really know the exact numbers, which I'll, as, when we get into talking specific infrastructure, we will have exact numbers. But they're starting at that 50% number and working their way down, right? So the state law says you can't charge more than the 50% number. And, and of course, some areas, that's a piece of cake. In our area, that's huge, right? So there's, we started at this number, and we, you know, we vetted, go through it, we discussed, yell, scream, or whatever. And we, we, this March, when we meet on the 28th, we, because we've gone through all four, roads, water, stormwater, and wastewater, we've gone through all four. And so this March will be kind of the, the, the roundtable discussion of, okay, what do you think? You know, what's good, what's bad? You know, how do we think it should go? And that, that meeting should produce recommendations that we want to move forward to city council, right? The, this is, and I'm, I showed, I wanted to show you this slide because across the board, right? Whatever those numbers, those capital improvement project numbers were, the state law requires us to cut them in half, right? And with the calculation, when we cut these, these numbers in half, CAC then starts to look at all of our infrastructure and makes decisions on, hey, this is what we think is reasonable, rational. And I should tell you, we've done four, and it, and, and when you think there would be a lot of yelling, screaming, kicking, crying, whatever, in many respects, there was more crying and kicking with master plans. There's a lot of, you know, kind of eye-opening, kind of, okay, yeah, I see what you mean. Because it's, this is expensive stuff. It's very important in terms of how we're going to look, you know, in the next, in the next decade, right? So it, it requires serious attention, and I think they've done that. And that's what I'll be bringing to you guys for your, you know, comments and, you know, your thoughts as well. And keeping in mind, as I said before, at the workshop, you'll, everyone, council, planning, you'll have, you'll have an opportunity to say, hey, why'd you guys do this? Why'd you guys do that, right? Because they'll be a part of the, the discussion as well. Next slide. Again, this is just an example of, of, of the cities in Texas that, that utilize impact fees to some extent, right? And as you see, we sit kind of in the middle of all of that, and we utilize the trust funds, which only do water and wastewater. Stormwater and transportation are on us, those of us who live in the city. Unlike Buck, he lives in Portland. But the rest of us, we pay those fees, right? So it's kind of like, and I'll share this with you, and I said it at, at, at one, at our last CAC meeting, because, which I'll do for you as well. We were charged to do a mock project that showed how projects develop with trust funds, and how project, how that same project would develop with impact fees. And the point that I made is that, you know, the SLA road here in Corpus Christi, maybe it started out with, I don't know, 100 homes or whatever, but zoning and plats and building permits kept coming. We kept issuing them, and builders kept building, right? Because once the infrastructure's in, no one really rings the bell to say, hey. Because there's no requirement for in, a, a traffic impact analysis because the plat's already done, right? You're just, you're just filling in the lots, right? And at some point, as you know, it, it, it was, the batters were way ahead of the pitchers there. It was way more cars on that little local residential street than, and, and of course, the citizens, they don't go to the builder and say, what the heck? They turn to, you know, my department and say, you idiots. Well, look at this, right? And so, of course, the city, all of us spent money on something that if we had planned, we had a plan, we could have, we could have easily navigated our way through that, right? Or, or just been better prepared. So this is just kind of showing, and, you know, everyone I know, when I show this, everyone goes, we don't want to be like these other cities. And it's not showing you that, it's just saying, we are way behind in terms of, of, of development, infrastructure, and those kinds of things. And if someone's already dug a well, we don't have to dig a well. We can just probably just take water from it if we, if we collectively think, hey, that's an easier approach. So it's, as I said earlier, it's been an interesting engagement with CAC this half. It was such a struggle the first half, but it's been an interesting process, right? And, and I, I think, as you go through this with, with Dice and I, it'll be an interesting, I mean, I, I, I think you'll see that as well, right? But as always, as I recommend, ask questions. If we cannot answer the questions, I'll certainly try to get you answers to the questions when I come back at the next meeting. I think that's the last slide, right, sir? Thank you. So are there questions?
Questions for Mr. Raymond.
You said this was replacing, I guess, a trust, is that correct?
Trust funds, yes.
A trust funds? Where did that money come from?
Great question. Any individual who plats in this city, or who pulls a meter set in this city, pays into that bucket. You pay into it with lot and acreage fees. You have a plat, and we, the, the formula looks at the acreage, or it looks at the number of lots, residential, commercial, whatever, and you required to pay the, the greater of the two. And that bucket just fills up. And in theory, anyone who plats pays into the bucket, which conversely means that if you wanted to, you had a development, say, oh, yeah, I want to use a lot of the trust funds to pull, extend infrastructure to my development. It doesn't necessarily always work that way. Not because of me, it just doesn't. Or, or it's, I shouldn't say it just doesn't, it's just challenging.
That's where the council lobbying goes.
That's exactly right. Yes.
And so the idea behind this is to eliminate, you know, hey, you know, there's limited amounts of funds and trust funds, so I, I need a million dollars of it, and, you know, the balance is constantly negative, pretty much.
Correct. It's been nega, in, in the middle of '23, it's never seen daylight. So, and it's a negative, it's a negative 5.7. That's why Peter, oh, and I don't know if you know this, I'm sure you do, but when we were, we were sitting with Peter reviewing, reviewing council before, last Tuesday, or this Tuesday, and he goes, I'm not going to take that to council. I've got to, because then if we'd have, if we would have, council would have passed the, the trust fund items, everyone council, on that agenda, on last Tuesday's agenda, the balance would have been around 16, a negative 16 million. Peter goes, I've got to let council know, they're writing checks that we can't fund, right? Because in theory, you can say, well, the trust funds will take care of it. But the, the fees are so low on the trust funds that, that you could almost never really catch up, unless you just lay the set for, I don't know, a few years. But with that kind of funding, we take about $1.5 million in average a year. Sometimes more, sometimes less, but usually more or less. So if, if it's a $16 million balance or a $20 million balance, you're looking at, you know, seven, six or seven years. That's crazy, because that means that if you get trust fund monies, you've got to carry it until the city can marry up with that. So it's just, it's, it's kind of antiquated. And without insulting folks, just saying, hey, this is a new way to consider, to develop your city, right? So.
I was just wanting to find, I mean, I was looking at this one about the 50%. You know, you mentioned that we have to try to, that, that the, the total price that we're going to have to cut it in half. I mean, I know, I went briefly to the meeting at CAC, and I know they were talking about issues. I didn't follow up with everything. But you also mentioned that during the CAC meeting, all the fussing and fighting and everything, that they're still now understanding it a little bit better on the cost, because everything has gone up.
Understood.
Understand that it's going to be extremely more costly than what we first probably had talked about it. And if we don't try to move on it, it's probably going to get more costly.
Even more, exactly.
Are we able to come up with those numbers, to be able, what we're, what we're going to be able to, what we're having to do?
Understood. And that.
Are you going to be able to stay within that 50% range?
And that's sort of the question that was asked by Councilman Hernandez when, which is why he voted no not to approve the CIPs. Because for some reason, he, well, two things, he thought by approving the CIP, it obligated us, or made us, we have to, we're encumbered now for, I don't know, $6 billion or whatever it was, right? The, the members of CAC, and I'll say this, and I'm, I've only been here five years this, this August, but the, the members of CAC are people like you who've been here all their life, right? So it's not just newbies that are saying, oh, let's do this. You know, as, you know, some of the biggest developers that are there, and as we always say, kind of the biggest whiners and complainers, they're there. And they're, they're, they're having a look at this and, and kind of reconcile that amongst themselves, which is why this meeting we have in, in, in March, which is a public meeting, by the way, is, is very important now, because we've gone through and we assessed all of the four infrastructure. We looked at the pricing and looked at the, the formulas that gets us to the fifth, the number that says, okay, now cut that in half. What do you think, right? And it's not, it's not a, it's not an exorbitantly large number, like, oh, my God. It's just, it's, it's different than what we've done before. But what we're doing now, I, I want to say, Dice, I think our land, Andrew, what is that? What is our lot and acreage fee? Is this only like, it's really like, oh, 1,100 bucks or something? Yeah, it's, it's really small. So in theory, right now with the trust funds, maybe every lot, a developer pays, let's say, 1,100 bucks, right? And all you get is water and wastewater. That's it, right? When a developer builds a street in the subdivision, it's a, he warrants it for two years. He warrants that street sidewalk and curbs with a handshake agreement, not a bond, right? We're, we're so different than the, than the world around us. And, and there are many people in this world fighting to hold on to, to what we have, rather than to see, you know, a better day, right? And our job is not to say he's wrong, she's wrong, or whatever, just, hey, it's gonna, and you mentioned it too, and we've even said it before, hey, today it's $1, tomorrow it's going to be $10, right? So at some point, if we want to be, you know, you know, sparkling city by the bay, we're going to have to get on this train eventually, right? Are we going to stay, you know, like we are? And one of my favorite stories, Dice and I kind of make jokes about it, but I, I think it was in 1975, the city of Austin and this city was, had the same population in 1975. Now the city of Austin is approaching over a million people, and we're, we're, we're barely cracking through in the thousand. Because as you know, as I presented to you before, we're, we're starting to lose population, right? And all those things, I think, is because, you know, the city looks a certain way, and it's, it's probably not as inviting as it could. These things help change that, right? So it's gonna, it's gonna cost, right? You're gonna have, we're gonna all have to bite the bullet, right? But it's, it's, as, as the councilman said, it's not for him or me, it's for people who'll be here tomorrow.
And I get it, because I do want the growth to happen here. I mean, I would like to see it grow as best to its ability. And all of this cost, of course, it'll trickle down to the taxpayers. So, you know, it's going to be something we really need to take a really hard look at and make sure that this is something that will benefit both.
Understood.
That people can afford, and that the growth will continue.
And, and she made, and you made a great statement, and I didn't say that, say before. The commissioner said it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be on the back of the taxpayers. That's not true. It'll be on the back of the people who are buying the new product, right? So, but think about it, when I came here four years ago, and I said, like, oh, my gosh, look at the cost of these homes. It's like, you're in the middle of nowhere. Why would this home be so frigging expensive? But that's, tomorrow, they're going to be even more, right? Whether we do this or not, it's somehow it's going to be even more. And you, well, how is it so expensive? Look at these roads, look at, look at what we have here. It's just, it's, it's the life we live now, right? So it's not necessarily you and I, the taxpayers, it's just going to be the guy who's going to say, is 400 grand enough for me to buy a house? Or should I stay, stay in an apartment, right? And that's, you know, those individuals will ultimately decide, you know, do we do it or do we don't, right? So, and, and, and CAC is aware of that, right? They're, they're aware of, hey, you know, it, it does trickle down, but, but infrastructure costs, right? It, it really costs. And for example, even if council votes this down, we still will have to say, okay, developers, we're going to have to look at this trust fund, and we're going to go from that cushy $1,000 to something more around, you know, $5,000, right? Because it, it's, it's just a different world. Everything costs, right? Oddly enough, after COVID in 2020, or whenever, everything went up unbelievably, and you don't know why, you know, why. But it, it is the world we live in, and I, and I think the CAC members are aware of that. And, and ultimately, their recommendation will, will, will.
Well, it is necessary for our city.
Yes.
It is. It's important and necessary, so, anyway, thank you.
Since the inception of the trust fund system, because I know I've, I've heard Bart romanticize about his father helping come up with the ideas and, and stuff like that. But since that, since the inception of the trust fund, how many fee, I mean, what regularity are the, are the fee increases? Are we still dealing with the same fee increases, fees that, from the 80s or whenever it was first come up with?
Before I respond to that, I, I'm, I'm going to ask your permission to use that, romanticize about the trust funds. That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
That's, that's pretty good. Let's write that down. We, the trust funds were, sorry, the trust fund fees were increased in 2013. Okay. We, that's what I was going to go through. We came in 2019, and in '21, when we had our fee increase, we, we got our fee increase passed, we have raised the 2013 fees 10% each year, which still means that if they were ridiculously low in 2013, and I add 10% to it, it's just 10% onto a ridiculously low fee. We've raised that, we've raised the 10% three years in a row, right? So still, you, we put 30% on a ridiculously low fee that gets us to about $1,100. Think about that. You're bringing water and waste infrastructure. In 2003, when the city council added lift stations and forced mains to those funds, you think they increased those funds? And that's really what's driving us and, driving that, that fund into the hole. A lift station almost averages $3.5 million, right? It, it's one thing if, if you're developing Rancho Vista within the city limits, and you spend, say, $4 million on a lift station, and then Rancho Vista plats the other, final plats, because they, you know, I don't know, it's 300 acres, and they only do 10 acres at a time. It, it's one thing if, if you're developing Rancho Vista within the city limits and you spend, say, $4 million on a lift station and then Rancho Vista plats the other final plats, cause they, you know, I don't know, it's 300 acres, they only do 10 acres at a time. And then other people around Rancho Vista start development and money goes into the trust fund so fast, you don't really see the, the absent $4 million. But when you go across O.S.O. and there's people like, hmm, should I, should I not? And, and you're the, these island developments like London Town or King's Landing, now you are, or what's the guy, what is Temesas Development, Caspian, right? Now money, now you're taking money out, but money's not quickly flowing back in, so it's like, oh my gosh. And so in 2023, even though over the years, the trust funds have gone down in the red and then gone back up into the black, but I, I was saying by mid 2023 last year, they never, they went down in the red and just kept growing, right? So, and right now we're at 5.7. Peter's gonna bring back the things he pulled off, just to let council know, hey, we're writing checks we can't pay. And that's probably gonna put us somewhere around $16 million in, in the hole, right? So whether, whether impact fees are approved or not, we still have to do something. If, if we keep this system, we have to kind of revamp it and turn it into something really modern, so.
And the, I, cause I've always, I agree with the intent of, of impact fees. And, and I like to look at other communities, I haven't looked into it too much over in Portland, but you know, you talk to the development community and they say, oh, Portland's a screeching halt, nothing's happening over there because of the impact fees. So, but I've always, I've always had a little bit of heartburn whenever we've had annexation requests come before planning commission and, you know, we have a economic impact analysis of, you know, at full buildout, you know, this is going to be the net benefit to the city. And it's normally, you know, pretty close to break even.
It's not a lot, right?
Right.
And we, we spend more servicing than we get back from abhorrent taxes, it's not, it's not.
Yeah, and, and that, that was always my, you know, arguments to Andrew is, hey, what about police, fire, solid waste, vector control, animal control? You know, all of these other services that we have to provide now to these new areas. And that's not really captured anywhere in impact fees.
True.
So you gotta, kinda have to rely on, you know, other revenue sources to continue to expand those services. Cause density wise, Corpus Christi is not very dense at all.
True.
And I've always kind of noticed and I always talk, whenever I'm talking to my developer friends about migration versus actual growth. Where, you know, certain areas of the city, you know, it's much easier to just go buy a new house than it is to remodel what you got. And then they just kind of slowly deteriorate areas of town and things move around. So this, unfortunately, I think will address some of that, because it's going to stunt a little bit of development and.
And it'll be perfect, perfect, purposeful, right? It just won't happen, it'll be purposeful, right? So, and the thing about you, you, you mentioned how, you know, that these satellite developments happen, right? The trust fund will pull water and wastewater out there, but the roads and the stormwater, that's on you and me. And that's, that's the loss that you're seeing, because the, no one's paying for it except for us and we're, we're fed up with all of the stuff we're paying for and it's just ridiculous. So this, this hopefully, you know, there's no real silver bullet that makes this, you know, a Shangri-La, but this is the start in the right direction, right? So, and hopefully, people like yourself will use your platform to, to say, yeah, this is, this makes reasonable sense. And, and of course, as we, I do this and I'll come every Wednesday, cause we got a lot of stuff to discuss, you know, and you ask questions. But you, you've gotta engage people that don't understand, because you have people romanticizing about how great things are and it may not be the truth, so to speak. So anyway, thank you.
All right. Anything else for Al? Okay, if there's no other business, I will adjourn this meeting.